Good evening and welcome everyone to tonight's council meeting. Council, first off, I'd be looking for an adoption of the agenda.
Your worship, I'll move that we adopt the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Counsel Freezin.
I'll second that, your worship.
Counsel Dag, this agenda was circulated to us last week. Everyone had a chance to read through it. Does anyone have any additions to this agenda and changes they'd like to be seen made? Hearing none, moved by Counsel Freezin, seconded by Counsel Dag. All those in favor? This motion's passed. Counsel next.
Your worship, I will move the adoption of the minutes of the council meeting held December 17, 2018.
Thank you, Counsel Toles.
I'll second those minutes from way back, your worship.
Thank you, Counsel Pless. Same thing, these were circulated to us last week. Did anyone see any omissions, any errors, anything they'd like to see changed on these minutes? Hearing none, moved by Counsel Toles, seconded by Counsel Pless. All those in favor? This motion's passed. Counsel, we don't have any proclamations this evening, but we do have a delegation. At this time, I'll invite Nicole Spence, our event and program manager, and Chris Kelleher, our community recreation coordinator from our city. They're here to give us an update on Scotiabank Hockey Day in Canada. Welcome to council.
Thank you so much, your worship and members of council. We're so excited to be here tonight to talk to you about the 19th edition of Scotiabank Hockey Day in Canada that's coming to Swift Current February 6 through the 9. It's a jam-packed four days of activity that Chris and I are gonna walk you through here.
So just to give a bit of an overview, a quick kind of rundown on the schedule. Starting out, the event Wednesday, February 6 is the Music of Hockey Day with Ron McLean. Some performers include the Hunter Brothers, Brian Trache, and many more. That event's being hosted at the Living Sky Event Center, and tickets for that are $25 each. It's a family-friendly event, so kids or parents can come on out and enjoy the night. Moving into Thursday, February 7, it's the Scotiabank Hockey in Canada banquet, and that is taking place at the Stockade at Kinetic Park. Tickets for that are $25 for youth and $50 for adults. That's been hosted by Ken Reed and Ivanka Osmak from Sportsnet. Ron McLean, Don Cherry are gonna be there. Stanley Cup is gonna be in the house as well. Tickets for that are going very, very well, so it promises to be a good night for sure. Moving into the Friday, February 8, there's a couple of events. The NHL Declaration of Principles breakfast, that's taking place at the Iplex at 7:30 a.m. that morning. That's hosted by Andrew Ferentz. We have a five-member panel who's gonna be chatting that day. Andrew Ferentz, Matt Gross of the Swift Current Midget AAA Legionnaires, Terry Pavely, the head coach of the AAA Wildcats, Cassie Campbell-Pascal, and Bobby Joe Slusar. Tickets for that are $10 each, and again, it's a family-friendly event. Moving into that night, excuse me, a couple of events. The Alumni and Celebrity Classic, obviously being hosted at the Iplex. Tickets for that are on sale at the stable. Some alumni include Sheldon Kennedy, Lanny McDonald, Rob Needemeyer, Trent McLeary, Wendell Clark, Cassie Campbell-Pascal, Darcy Tucker, and many more. And then after the alumni game is the cabaret, and that's taking place at the Stockade. Lots of performers have confirmed, just a few, the Bedini Band, Brian Trache, Hunter Brothers, Tara Sloan, Glenn Healy, as many, many more. Tickets for the cabaret are free with your purchase of an alumni game ticket or $10 at the door. And then moving into Saturday, to cap off the event, it's Broncos versus Blades. So it's a rematch of the '89 Memorial Cup final. Broncos are gonna be wearing special jerseys that night. Many alumni are gonna be on hand, so it's promised to be a good game to cap off the four-day event. And then mixed in throughout the four days, some other highlights, school visits, we're gonna have NHL alumni, Ron McLean are gonna be doing some school visits to local schools, a visit to Riverview Estates and Saskabilities. There's a few minor hockey clinics with players from Swift Current, referee clinic, and then of course, the Sheldon Kennedy Youth Outdoor Classic will be going on as well. Tickets for the music, the banquet, and the breakfast are available here at City Hall and Pharmasave, and then as I mentioned, with the Broncos game and the Alumni Classic through the stable, the Broncos.
One of the events that we'd like to highlight is capping off on Saturday, February the 9 at River Dean Park, and that is our Free Outdoor Festival. This is taking place from 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. at River Dean Park. As we mentioned, this is going to be the live broadcast that Ron McLean will be doing onsite. So Ron McLean will be onsite, there'll be numerous NHL alumni doing autographs. We're gonna kick off the event at 11:00 a.m. with a special Stanley Cup presentation celebration coming into the park, so we're encouraging everyone to be there at 11:00 a.m. But there's a ton of activities happening throughout the day. The main stage will be open with different acts and performers. We will have hot stoves, so the alumni will be onstage talking about their experiences from 1:00 at 1:00 and 3:30 p.m. We have tons of family activations, so there will be slave rides, there'll be winter carnival activities. The Calgary Flames are bringing in activation tents, as well as Sportsnet will have some activation tents there. There's gonna be your chance to get the pitcher with the Stanley Cup. So we're really encouraging everyone to come out to that free family festival on Saturday from 11:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. One of the things we are encouraging people with that, though, River Dean is not gonna have a lot of parking onsite, so we are encouraging everyone to take shuttles that will be available from the Credit Union Iplex down to the park. Those shuttles will be running from 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m., so you'll definitely be able to grab a shuttle. They'll be running nonstop on continuous loops. There will be food onsite, so it's just a matter of getting yourself down there to enjoy a day of fun. If the weather is not great, we will be, hopefully it's gonna be beautiful, we've run a few of these in all sorts of weather, but if it is too cold, we will just move indoors to the Innovation Credit Union Iplex for that part of the event. So if you are looking for ways to be involved, there's a few ways. One of the things with all of these fantastic great events is that we do need volunteers. So we are still looking for volunteers for that outdoor festival from that 10:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. So if you have one or two hours that you're willing to spare and you're gonna be at the site anyway, we would love to have you there sharing in that experience with us. It will be a fantastic day, and we have some amazing people that you'll get to work with that day. The other way that you can get involved is by purchasing some merchandise. We do have a limited stock of the merchandise available at the stable, so that's your way to promote and help showcase the upcoming event.
We have an initiative, it's called Paint the Town. So what that is, is just encouraging local businesses and restaurants, you know, people at home, the schools, to get excited for the event. I mean, kinda anywhere you go around the city here, obviously the windows here at City Hall, signage, signage is a fair view at the Iplex. We've definitely done a good job, the community's done a good job of, you know, making sure that it's advertising the community. With the Paint the Town initiative, so we're working with the local Scotiabank branch, Ben Nesbitt and his team, so what we've done is drop off schedule of events, deckles, tent cards, save-a-day cards, so they're gonna work with, in conjunction with us, to extend that package to local businesses and restaurants who may be interested in, you know, in decorating their office. We're also working with the Chamber of Commerce to send an email to their contacts, just inviting them to the event, inviting them to participate, and then just spreading the excitement. We're just over three weeks away now, so it's coming quick, and I think the excitement's definitely rising.
For sure. If the community is looking for more information about the event or to volunteer, they can contact us here at City Hall at 306-778-2787, or they can visit our website at swiftcurrent.ca/hockeyday. There is a link there of all the schedule of events and all the great things that are happening, as well as a tab to volunteer and get your name in. So we look forward to a fantastic event and having the whole community there to celebrate with us as Ron and Don are in our community.
Well, that's excellent. Thanks so much. Great presentation. I think everyone here is very excited as well. At this time, I'll open it up to council and see if they have any questions at all for you. Go ahead, please, Counsel Freezin.
Well, thanks for being here, and yes, it is getting exciting. I don't think this is the first time we've ever had this event in Swift Current, right? So we have to, we have to do a good job and really showcase our city. I guess I was just curious, you were talking about the volunteers, and I know it always takes a ton of volunteers to get these kinds of big events off the ground and keep them going smoothly. How many volunteers are you needing total?
We're kinda estimating that it'll be around that 350 to 400 volunteers between all the different events, the ones that are being utilized for the coaching clinic, alumni games, as well as the outdoor festival. So it really does take a team, and we're so fortunate to have an amazing group of committee members in our community and people taking on these initiatives to make sure we can keep them driving forward.
Thank you.
Hey, Pat?
So much. On hearing none, excellent presentation. We are just absolutely thrilled for what's coming to Swift Current February 6 to 9, for all of our community members that are watching this, and definitely for the media. This is the biggest thing that we could possibly be bringing to Swift, and we're beyond grateful for Scotiabank and for Sportsnet and all the work that they've been doing with the Broncos, with WHL, with the city of Swift Current, with all of our staff and all of our facilities to bring this here, something that started well over a year ago. So we're very grateful, we're excited, and I know that, I know you'll hit your volunteer numbers that you're looking for, I think you're pretty close right now, so that's very exciting. And just, go Hockey Day, go. We are absolutely thrilled. Thanks so much for coming today.
Thank you.
Definitely another great way to start off our council meeting, and at this time, I'll turn it over to Ms. Hoffman, please to start us off with accounts.
Thank you, worship and members of council. Enclosed are the general revenue fund disbursements for the period December 10 to the 14th, 2018, and I respectfully recommend that $1,290,479.27 in disbursements be approved. Included in that is a payment of $265,000 for payroll benefits, payment of $671,000 for the purchase of energy, payment of $36,000 for the purchase of our annual raw water that will be used at the water treatment plant, payment of $31,000 and $12,000 for costs associated with the CCA rodeo, payment of $14,000 for purchase of office equipment for Kinetic Park, payment of $71,000 for costs associated with the utility billing software upgrade, payment of $23,000 for costs associated with plumbing and heating upgrades at Dixon Community Center and the Iplex, and a payment of $16,000 for costs associated with the CCA rodeo.
Thank you, Ms. Hoffman, council.
Your worship, I will recommend that $1,290,479.27 in disbursements be approved for the period December 10 to the 14th.
Counsel Martin's?
I'll second that, your worship.
Counsel Bowditch, council, do you have any questions or comments in regards to this report? Go ahead, please, Counsel Pless.
Thanks, your worship, as I frequently do, and I wouldn't wanna miss the end period of 2018 as well, but just draw attention to one item that's in, actually, this set of accounts, as well as the following set of accounts, if I can be so bold as to look forward. So, you know, between the periods of December 10 and December 31, just about $1 million was spent in disbursements for purchasing energy from Sask Power. And as, I'm sure people are becoming more aware now, since I've probably done this about 50 times, I would say now. Sask Power is a provider of energy, the city of Swift Current has our own light and power distribution utility, which we're very fortunate to have, provides lots of great benefits for folks in the city of Swift Current, and has been a central piece to our financial strategy that's led us to where we're at today. But as I've mentioned lots of times, our Sask Power purchase is not something that we purchase and simply consume, it's something that we purchase for the purpose of reselling through our light and power utility. So it is not quite as bad as it looks. Thanks, your worship.
Thanks so much, Counsel Pless. Counsel, do you have any other questions or comments in regards to this report? In hearing none, this is moved by Counsel Martin, seconded by Counsel Bowditch. All those in favor? This motion's passed. Ms. Hoffman?
Enclosed are the general revenue fund disbursements for the period December 17 to the 31st, 2018, and I respectfully recommend that $2,177,774.88 in disbursements be approved. Included in that is a payment of $66,000 for payroll benefits, a payment of $282,000 for the purchase of energy, payment of $22,000 for power costs in city facilities outside our franchise area, payment of $47,000 for natural gas costs, payment of $33,000 for costs associated with upgrades to our Forest Main and the South Hill Pump Station, payment of $29,000 for costs associated with South Monroe Phase 1 subdivision fees, payment of $250,000 for costs associated with replacing the lamellas and the installation of an air scour system at the water treatment plant, payment of $11,000 for purchase of chemicals that will be used at the water treatment plant, payment of $14,000 for costs associated with replacing the gate at the service center, payment of $16,000 for costs associated with the official community plan, payment of $13,000 for purchase and delivery of gravel that will be used by streets and transportation, payment of $13,000 for the purchase of tamper-proof meter rings for use by light and power, payment of $815,000 for costs associated with the 2018 asphalt and concrete contract, payment of $33,000 for costs associated with the Downtown Underground Project, payment of $16,000 for recycling depot operations, payment of $22,000 for costs associated with yearly actuator valve replacement at the water treatment plant, payment of $28,000 for landfill operations, a payment of $100,000 for garbage collection, payment of $37,000 for costs associated with Cypress Point, payment of $11,000 for costs associated with the Community Services Master Plan, payment of $12,000 for the purchase of chemicals that will be used by the water treatment plant, and a payment of $32,000 for costs associated with the airport runway extension, Cypress Point, CPR rear rehab, the truck fill station upgrade, and the 2018 road program.
Thank you, Ms. Hoffman, council.
Your worship, I'll move that we approve disbursements in the amount of $2,177,774.88 for the period December 17 to 31st.
Thank you, Counsel Freezin. Counsel Toles, council, do you have any questions or comments in regards to this report? Hearing none, moved by Counsel Freezin, seconded by Counsel Toles. All those in favor? This motion's passed. Ms. Hoffman?
I'll start the general revenue fund disbursement for the period January 2 to the 4th, 2019, and I respectfully recommend that $451,500.10 in dispersals be approved. Included in that is a payment of $270,000 for payroll benefits, a payment of $13,000 for surveying costs associated with Valley Bridge subdivision, payment of $21,000 for costs associated with the Western Canada Summer Games, payment of $67,000 for costs associated with the 2018 asphalt and concrete contract, and a payment of $11,000 for costs associated with landfill cover material.
Ms. Hoffman, council?
Your worship, I'd like to move that we accept the recommendation that $451,500.10 in dispersments be approved for the period of January 2 to the 4th, 2019.
Thank you, Counsel Dag.
I'll second that, your worship.
Counsel Pless, council, do you have any questions or comments in regards to this report? Hearing none, moved by Counsel Dag, seconded by Counsel Pless. All those in favor? This motion's passed. And, Ms. Hoffman, it's your night.
Thank you, worship, members of council. The subject of this report is the 2019 water treatment chemical tender. Each year, the city tenders the water treatment plant chemical requirements used in the production of potable water. The chemicals are placed into inventory at the time of purchase and expensed when used. Attached is the summary of the tenders received for the supply and delivery of the 2019 water treatment chemical requirements. All prices are FOBs with current GST, ZEP and GST extra. Quantities stated are based on previous year's usage and are estimated on them. Also attached is a table comparing the recommended unit prices for 2019 to the 2018 paid unit prices, and overall, we're looking at a 4% increase. The tender submissions were reviewed with the water treatment plant superintendent and the lowest total unit price for each chemical meeting the specifications will be recommended. I therefore respectfully recommend that the supply and delivery of the 2019 water treatment chemical requirements to the city's water treatment plant be awarded as follows. Potassium permagnate, Clear Tech Industries, unit price $5.01 a kg. Activated carbon, Clear Tech Industries, unit price $2.33 a kg. Liquid fluoride, Clear Tech Industries, unit price $1.39 a kg. Chlorine liquefied gas, Clear Tech Industries, unit price $1.10 a kg. Caustic soda, Clear Tech Industries, $681.04 a ton. Liquid alum, Chemtrade West, unit price $299.01.
Thank you, Ms. Hoffman. Counsel, there's no need to read it all out, simply state that you'll be moving the recommendation as cited in the table.
Okay. Your worship, I'll make the motion that we accept the recommendation that the supply and delivery of the 2019 water treatment chemical requirements to the city's water treatment plant be awarded as was, as mentioned.
Thank you, Counsel Bowditch.
I'll second that, your worship.
Thank you, Counsel Freezin. Counsel, do you have any questions or comments in regards to this report? Something that does come to our council every year, and every year I know our team works the best they can to get the best prices for each and every one of these types of chemical that go into our water treatment plant.
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Ms. Hoffman? I just wanted to ask, is, are these numbers compared to last year, are they significantly higher, on pace, or do you think they're, I just wonder what the trend is?
Thank you for the question, counselor. They are, I mean, overall, they're about 4% higher than they were in 2018, and we have adjusted our 2019 to cover these increases.
Thank you. Thank you, Counsel Dag. Counsel, I'm sorry, I missed your question. Does anyone have any other questions or comments in regards to this report? Moved by Counsel Bowditch, seconded by Counsel Freezin, all those in favor? This motion's passed. Who's gonna be the, oh, go ahead, please, Mr. Marcus?
Thank you, your worship. This report deals with the 2019 and 2020 cemetery fees. The 2017 and 2018 cemetery fees ended January 31st, 2019. The fees for the sale of cemetery plots, lots, and for burials, the opening and closing are approved by council. In 2018, we budgeted to recover 74%, and as of the 2018 year-end, our recovery rate was 75%. Recovery rates over the past eight years are attached in the appendix. The total annual revenue is directly related to the number of internments the city does in a year. The city's cemetery revenue comes from four main sources. The sale of lots and plots, which was in 2018, $63,481. The burial fees, which was $80,235. The sale of niches, $19,196. And monument permits, which were $3892. Municipal cemeteries, which report higher recovery rates, generally augment operating revenues with earnings from the perpetual care fund and/or the sale of items such as concrete foundations, vaults, liners, markers, columbaria inscriptions, urns, et cetera. The sale of cemetery items can bring in substantial revenues and is mainly offered by larger municipal or private cemeteries. In relation to other urban cemeteries in the province, Appendix A, and their rate structure, our rates are average or slightly below average in specific areas. The categories and/or structure of fees of the various municipal cemeteries all differ. Some have licensing fees, some have veterans or other specific categories. The attached proposed two-year cemetery rates represent a 10% increase for internments and disinternments, and a 10% increase for lots and niches in 2019. A further 10% increase for internments and disinternments, and a 10% increase for lots and niches will take effect February 1st, 2020. The monument installation permit, currently at $75, for companies to access our cemetery and provide installations, will increase by $5 for each of the next two years. A two-year plan will assist others who are dependent on our rates to make their plans accordingly and to reduce the administration time involved in setting these fees annually. Therefore, we respectfully recommend that city council approves the attached two-year cemetery rates, which include GST for the period of February 1st, 2019, to January 31st, 2021.
Thank you, Mr. Marcus, council.
Worship, I'll move Mr. Marcus's recommendation that city council approve the attached two-year cemetery rates for the period of February 1st, 2019, to January 31st, 2021.
Counsel Pless?
Thank you.
I'll second that, your worship.
Counsel Dag, council, do you have any questions or comments in regards to the, in regards to these proposed fees? Go ahead, please, Counsel Toles.
Thank you, your worship, and I really should've sent this to you ahead of time, and I didn't, I have it marked in my, in my pages here. On the page 19 of our, where it talks about niches, and it says a single niche and a companion niche, the companion niche, does that mean there are two of them? Like, it's not a second, it's not a second one that costs a lot more than the first one? It looks like the, that the price for two is, how am I recording this? The price for one is, is $1,300, and the price for a second one is 17, or is 26, sorry. Yeah, that's, so it'll, it'll be two for that price of one, is that what we're dealing with? Like, it wasn't clear.
That's correct, council.
So that's what I wanted to find out. Thank you.
Thank you, good question, Counsel Toles.
So just so I'm clear on that answer, a companion niche is actually a larger niche that can fit two, is that right? Or a single niche is just for one, internment for one?
Yep, that's correct, council.
Okay, thanks. If I could ask another question?
Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you very much for your report. I always find the tables to be very helpful, you know, we get to look at recovery rates all the way back to 2010 here, so, I mean, that gives us some useful history. But I'm wondering, just looking forward, and I know that we've always sort of aimed to be average to lower part of average for rates, if we're doing this for two years, do we, are we kind of guessing that this is probably what other communities are looking at? I think, you know, probably we're not terribly interested in being a whole bunch different than other places, but obviously there's bills to pay, and this is one of those areas where we, as a city council, have asked for there to be a certain recovery rate. So I presume that's staying fairly flat moving forward, the recovery rate?
Yes, Counsel Pless, the recovery rate has been fairly steady. It bounces around, of course, depending on the use of the cemetery. Prior to 2010, the rate was considerably lower than, I'll say, the average, around 70 to 76%. And so we did have a direction to raise the rates, to raise the recovery rate, which has been higher in the last eight years. In terms of the rates, the sale of the lots is, the lot rate is really the rates that, for residents, is below average, the non-resident rates are above average, and in the internment or disinternment rates were average or slightly above on most of them. So the only really advantage in these rates compared to some of our other cities that are on that table are really, we give a benefit to our residents if they're purchasing lots in the cemetery.
So looking forward, then, I presume we're still budgeting the same way that we're budgeting for a recovery rate in that 74, 75% range then for the next two years, I guess? Sorry for a long rambling question, but...
Yes, so the recovery rate should go up a little bit. Our 10% increase for both years, we believe, will be higher than some of the other cities. So our rates in comparison should catch up, and as well, we believe that if the use stays as compared, the recovery rate should inch up a couple of percent.
Thank you. Counsel Pless, just one maybe, do I see any other questions or comments in regards to this? One quick note on the Appendix A, I think there might be a typo there just to fix before we file, and I think it says 2016 in both of the highlighted, and I think it should be 18.
Oh, that's correct, your worship.
Million points?
Million points.
Perfect. I'll get out of the deficit here sometime. In this case, it was moved by Counsel Pless, it was seconded by Counsel Dag. All those in favor? This motion's passed. Mr. Mitkin?
Good evening, your worship and members of council. This, this report deals with the Saskatchewan ability... This, this report deals with the Saskatchewan Abilities Council Transit Operational Contract. The Saskatchewan Abilities Council has provided contracted operational services for the city of Swift Current's Access Transit System since 2006, and for the city's public transit system, Swift Transit, since its launch in April of 2015. The current operational contract is due for renewal, and the Saskatchewan Abilities Council has indicated their desire to continue to provide these services. The terms of the current agreement allow the contract to be negotiated for two one-year periods. The Saskatchewan Abilities Council's mission is to work with people of varying abilities to enhance their independence and participation in the community through vocational, rehabilitational, and recreational services. This contract provides the Saskatchewan Abilities Council with an opportunity to fulfill their mission while providing a valuable service to the city of Swift Current. The agreement with the Saskatchewan Abilities Council to provide services for both access transit and the public transit system is based on the cost of service plus a, an administration fee. This contract includes an option to renew for one subsequent year with a negotiated incremental increase based on operation and wage requirements. The contract fee is set for January 1st, 2019, to December 31st, 2019, at thirty-four thousand, three hundred and ninety-nine dollars and thirty-one cents a month plus GST. This is a reduction of approximately five dollars, five hundred dollars a month from last year's contract due to some reduced service hours on the blue line. It is therefore respectfully recommended that City Council approve the contract agreement with the Saskatchewan Abilities Council Swift Current branch to provide operational services for the city of Swift Current's transit systems for January 1st, 2019, to December 31st, 2019, at thirty-four thousand, three hundred and ninety-nine dollars and thirty-one cents per month plus GST, and that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to sign the contract.
Thank you, Mr. Minkin, Counsel.
Hi, your worship. I will recommend the City Council approve the contract agreement with Saskatchewan Abilities Council, Swift Current branch, to provide the operational services for the city of Swift Current Transit Systems for the period mentioned and dollars mentioned by Mr. Minkin.
Thank you, Counselor Martins.
I'll second that, your worship.
Mr. Pless. Counsel, do you have any questions or comments in regards to this? Go ahead, please, Counselor Pless.
Yeah, thanks, your worship. Transit's something that we talk about a lot as a council when it comes to budget time. And the reason why we talk about it a lot when it comes to budget time is because this is a service that we are providing on a trial basis to the city. This trial has been an extended trial, I guess would probably be the best way to put it, as we continue to seek efficiencies to make this service more efficient. You can see some of the result of that in the recommendation here tonight, where part of the reason there is a reduction in, in the contract amount is because there's a reduction in service. So we are attempting to find the right way forward, I guess is the right way to put this, on this file. I noticed that in the, in the agreement itself, and unfortunately, I make myself read all these agreements, your worship, but I notice here, one thing here, there's a, in Schedule B, there's a data collection portion, and I, I'm actually very happy to see that we've divided the, the day trip log, so the, the counting of rides or trips, I guess, between the hours of 8:00 AM and 6:00 PM, and then we've hived off a second one. And this might be new, might be existing, I'm not sure, but I'm glad to see it, that we're also counting from 6:00 PM to 9:00 PM. I think that's gonna be useful in giving us an idea of, you know, whether that evening shift is, is running the way that we need it to run to be able to continue to offer the service. So I want to just take this opportunity to say that as a council, at budget time, we decided to continue with this service, but I do want to stress to people that we did not continue, or we did not decide to continue with this service indefinitely. We haven't committed to it a hundred percent. This is still in trial mode. We still need to make sure that this makes sense for the citizens of the city of Swift Current, because it's a subsidized service, and transit in every city is. I don't think, I'd be very surprised if there was a, a transit service anywhere in North America that ran out of profit. It simply is a service to the community that is subsidized by tax. We want to make sure as a council that that's the right way for us to be moving forward in terms of our priorities. And if you are somebody who believes in this bus service, and somebody who wants to see this bus service continue, I would encourage you to find out more about it, and to do what you can to, to support the service, because even with the sales of advertising, even with a charter bus service that I see is available here, the revenues that come in don't even come close to covering the cost, and we are very interested in trying to shrink that gap. Now, we have an excellent partner in this, I see Kimmy's here, and we're very thankful for that partnership, and it's that partnership that's allowed us to actually continue to offer the service as long as we have. And, you know, I know that there are people who rely on the service, and I know it's an important service to some people in our community, and what I'm asking is that I, I hope that we try to make this a more relevant service for more people in our community to make it make sense moving forward for all of us. I know that Joene is here from the city, and that that's part of her task is to look after the busing service, and I believe she will be compiling and reporting to council at some point about just what I'm talking about tonight. So I want to give everybody, again, just notice that, please, if this is something you care about, act accordingly, because decisions will be made based on the data. So, thanks, your worship.
Perfect. Well said, Counselor Pless. Counsel, do you have any other questions or comments at this time for Mr. Minkin or for his team? Thank you so much for being here as well. Kimmy, we appreciate the partnership. Moved by Counselor Pless, sorry, moved by Counselor Martin, seconded by Counselor Pless. All those in favor? This motion's passed. Mr. Minkin.
Yes, this, this second report deals with recycled concrete and asphalt products. Over the past thirty years, environmental regulations regarding the disposal of used concrete and asphalt have shifted, requiring these products to be brought to a recycling facility or a landfill. These products have been accumulating over the same period of time at the city's east landfill. Many of the city's large demolition projects have contributed to these stockpiles, including the St. Joseph's and Ashley Park schools, the city hospital, and many residential and commercial properties. It is estimated that there's currently about forty thousand tons of stockpile concrete and about twenty thousand tons of asphalt. Additionally, there is an area nicknamed the concrete field, consisting of smaller piles of concrete with mixed demolition materials and metals. This field covers approximately seven acres and has been estimated to be about ten thousand to fifteen thousand tons of material. The majority of these materials were from the demolition of the city hospital. If the concrete field were to be buried, this is an approximate loss in airspace revenue of, of four hundred thousand dollars, with, with an expected dirt hauling cost of an, an additional forty thousand dollars, and numerous, numerous operational difficulties of spreading and compacting waste in this area. The Public Works Department has a growing need for usable aggregates to build and maintain streets. Streets such as Sidney Street West, Adam Street, Waker Road, and Battleford Trail West were estimated to need approximately two hundred and fifty thousand dollars of subbase materials to be repaired properly. These materials could be provided internally at a fraction of the cost of similar materials, and therefore, more streets and laneways could be repaired at the same cost. Infrastructure and Operations is proposing that the Solid Waste Utility provide funding for a two-year contract to have forty thousand tons of used concrete and up to twenty thousand tons of used asphalt crushed into usable products for city projects. These materials would become an inventory item which would be used by city departments at a fraction of the cost of comparable materials while freeing up airspace within the landfill. Quotations for concrete crushing services were invited from seven sources. Two bids were submitted, and a summary of quotations received is, is attached in Appendix A. Is therefore respectfully recommended that City Council approve the two-year recycled aggregate crushing contract agreement with rock crusher, concrete, and asphalt recycling for six hundred and sixty thousand dollars, PST included, GST excluded, and that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to sign the contract.
Thank you, Mr. Minkin, Counsel.
Your worship, I'll move that we approve the two-year recycled aggregate crushing contract agreement with rock crusher, concrete, and asphalt recycling for six hundred and sixty thousand dollars with PST included, GST excluded, and that yourself and the city clerk be authorized to sign.
Thank you, Counselor Friesen.
I'll second that.
And Counselor Toles. Counsel, do you have any questions or comments in regards to this report? Go ahead, please, Counselor Friesen.
Thanks, your worship. I'm sorry, I'm looking at Appendix A, and I got, I think, a little bit confused. I wasn't understanding who, like, if I, I must be reading it wrong. Option B is recommended based on unit pricing and the proposal to process the concrete field at no additional cost, it says, and then it also says under Option B that it denotes the contractor owns materials. So I wasn't sure, because in the report, it sounds like the city ends up with the materials once they're crushed.
Yes, option, option, yeah, no, it, yeah, there must be an error in there, because it's option, it's, option is that we will become the owner of the materials, is the option that we've, we've chosen.
Okay, okay, all right. So then, but it's still the six hundred and sixty.
It's still the six hundred and sixty, yep.
Okay, thank you.
It's a good question. Thanks for the clarification. Go ahead, please.
Thanks, your worship. I had basically a very similar question, because, you know, the background was sort of the justification of this whole report was that we had need for it, so I was somewhat confused moving forward, but I figured maybe I was just misreading something. So I'm glad Counselor Friesen brought that up, and glad to hear the confirmation that that's the result. But the one thing that I guess I keyed in on this report is that, you know, we have a lot of materials at our landfill right now that are, quite frankly, just taking up space. And I know at one point, I think just as you and I and Counselor Bowditch were coming on, Counsel, we had a contract at one point in time for somebody to, to come and crush some of these materials, and that was as a direct result of our friends that don't live here anymore, coming from the landfill and becoming a bit of a nuisance in the city, the R-word, which I won't say out loud for, because they don't live in Swift Current. But this should help, I think, to clean up the landfill in a lot of ways, and it looks like two years is sort of our target to clean all of these materials out, as far as I can tell, with the exception of possibly that concrete field. So that's where my question is going, is, are we getting that field cleaned up in this report or not?
Yes, that, that concrete field is, is obviously an option there. At, at that, at that, it's a, it's a small additional price to get that concrete field done, but the intent is to get that concrete field cleaned up.
So that's an option we would, at this point at least, intend to exercise.
Intend to exercise, absolutely.
Okay.
Yes, that's where the, that's where the bulk of the savings is, is to get that concrete field cleaned up so that we could use that airspace.
Yeah, the, it's, space is valuable at the landfill, and the longer we can continue to find ways to use that landfill, the far better off we are as ratepayers in the city of Swift Current.
Yeah.
So that's good, I'm glad to hear that. I think this is a, a good result for the city, but I had one more question for you as well, and I wanted to make sure that we were keeping the materials, so I guess I can scratch that question off there. But then, are we intending that we would use all of these materials internally, or will there ever be an option for businesses, for example, to purchase some for lots? I know there's probably lots of demand for this.
Yeah. Our, our primary intention is to use it internally, however, it would be available for us to market as well.
Okay. So what do you mean, it would be available? Are we actively going to do that, or would we be open to people approaching us on that? Because I'm even just aware, for my own purposes and purposes of other people who have property like my own, that there probably will be lots of demand if it's being asked. So just to set it clear whether or not we should ask or not.
Yeah, I, I believe we, we intend to use what we need internally first, and then any excess would be there, so it would be some time before we would be able to identify what would be there. But if we end up with excess, then obviously we would be looking to move it.
So we'd be looking at that about two years out.
That's, yeah, that's correct.
Thank you very much. Appreciate the report.
Thanks for the clarification. Go ahead, please, Counselor Toles.
Thank you, worship, and just to double-check some numbers, it looks to me like the savings for what you talk about on page thirty-six of our document, about approximately seven hundred, a hundred thousand dollars in savings when you consider the, the four hundred thousand dollars for, for airspace revenue and, and two hundred fifty thousand dollars of subbase materials you can use. It looks like about seven hundred thousand dollars worth of savings for six hundred and sixty thousand in expenses, so really it's kind of a break even.
Yeah, that, and that's, that's a pretty good, pretty good space to be in. If we could get to a, a break even or a little positive end of things, that would be, that would be where we want to end up.
The only thing I, question I have now is that I went through my budget in, from, from December, and I couldn't find, was this, was this budgeted in our budget, like, the, the six hundred, we'll have to spend that first, and then we'll recover it later?
That's correct. So it, it, it isn't budgeted because it's going into inventory, so then it becomes an asset in inventory, and it'll be paid for by projects as it's used, coming out of inventory for those road projects. So as those road projects are budgeted, then, then it'll pay for it.
Good. Thank you, Counselor Toles. Counsel, do you have any other questions or comments in regards to this report? Oh, good. Lots of clarification, that's perfect. At this time, it's been moved by Counselor Friesen, seconded by Counselor Toles. All those in favor? This motion's passed. Mr. Ruse.
Thank you, worship, and good evening, council. The report in front of you is a proposal to subdivide at 1555 Memorial Drive. In 2018, Warren &amp; Sons Limited had received approval to construct a new crematorium and a shop near the existing dwelling at Memory Gardens Cemetery on Memorial Drive. Warren's is now requesting approval to subdivide that property so that the cemetery grounds are contained within a separate legal parcel. This proposal was reviewed against the city's development plan, zoning bylaw, and subdivision bylaw, along with all other bylaws, policies, and statutory requirements. No issues were identified in this review. The attached plan of proposed subdivision of part of Parcel A, Plan DU 3611, will subdivide 5.38 hectares from the overall site to create Parcel C for the lands used solely as the cemetery grounds. The remaining area of approximately two hectares will accommodate the lands that include the existing dwelling and future crematorium and shop. Both parcels will share a single access point from Memorial Drive, as well as onsite private roads between the two parcels. This will require the developer to execute and register an easement agreement for shared use and access from Memorial Drive and these private roads. The proposal was circulated to various agencies for review. Comments received are as follows. From SAS Power, there is no objection. From the Department of Highways, they indicated that no direct access will be permitted from Highway Num, Number One or the on-ramp. From SASC Water Security Agency, no concerns, but made recommendations for potential improvements that would provide one-to-five-hundred-year flood protection for the cemetery grounds if desired by the developer. And the remaining agencies indicated that existing facilities and easements are to be maintained, relocated, or terminated at the developer's cost, and any new facilities and easements may be required under a servicing agreement with the developer. The provision of dedicated lands is exempted from this proposal under subsection 183FV of the Planning and Development Act. As the land is subdivided, as the land to be subdivided is intended solely as the land to be subdivided is intended solely for the purpose of a cemetery. Therefore, we respectfully recommend that the proposed subdivision of Parcel A, Plan DU three six one one, Extension One, be approved subject to the developer executing and registering an easement agreement for shared use and access from Memorial Drive and onsite private roads, and subject to any servicing agreement that may be required, and that the mayor and city clerk be authorized to sign the certificate of approval.
Thank you, Mr. Rus. Council.
Your worship, I'd like to make the motion that we accept the proposed subdivision of Parcel A, Plan DU three six one one, Extension One, but be approved subject to the developer executing and registering an easement agreement for shared use and access from Memorial Drive and onsite private roads, and subject to any servicing agreement that may be required, and that yourself, your worship, and the city clerk be authorized to sign the certificate of approval.
Thank you, Counselor Bowditch. Thank you, Counselor Tools. Council, do you have any questions or comments in regards to this report? Please go ahead, Counselor Lewis.
Thanks, your worship. Thank you for the report, Mr. Rus. The city of Swift Current, as you mentioned, is the approving authority for these sorts of subdivisions. But what I'm not clear on, I guess, is what ability do we have? I guess, when is it, is it appropriate for me to ask the purpose of the subdivision?
That's a, that's a fair question. I'm not, well, we wouldn't typically be asking for the purpose of the subdivision. All that has been communicated to staff at this time is just that they, the applicant wishes to create a legal separate parcel.
Well, I can tell you, I guess, that I have concern about moving forward on this, and I guess I, maybe you're not in a position to be able to provide me any comfort on this, but I'll tell you what my concern is, and I don't want to, you know, impute anything nefarious, but what we're doing here, it would be allowing the chunking off of the cemetery portion of this land from the useful or the revenue generating portion of this land. And I have concern that making them into two titles or two separate pieces of property, if you will, despite the fact that they might be tied, despite the fact that they have servicing agreements and easement agreements, could lead people to impute that at some point in time that's a parcel that might be beneficial to the owners to not own anymore. And I don't know if that's accurate or not, but I have, I guess, concern with treating them separately without some understanding that the cemetery portion will remain under the care of the existing owners. Because I don't think as a, I could be wrong, but we just talked about cemetery rates, and I don't understand the area as well as maybe as I should after this many number of years on council. But what I do understand from cemeteries is that they're not inexpensive to run and to maintain. And so my concern is, is that if we allow two different sections, we could be allowing down the road two different uses or treatments. And I, I'm not sure I'm comfortable supporting a subdivision without knowing or having some comfort on that front. So that's why I say, I apologize for putting you in this position, but without knowing, I guess, or having some comfort on the, the intended use of that area, or what the intention is, the desire to have two separate parcels, I'm not sure I'm prepared to support this motion.
So just to clarify, if, if the subdivision was to proceed and any property was sold, they would need the proper permits in place to change the actual use of the property? And that would come to city administration and potentially council, depending on the, the type of use that would be proposed?
I guess my concern, Mr. Rus, in that is that it's not a, it's not a sale that I'm concerned about. It's not an intended change of use I'm concerned about. In fact, it's, it's the exact thing that they would want to maintain the current use, but maybe not be responsible for that portion, the maintenance on that portion anymore, which would allow them to maintain, like I said, the crematorium portion, the revenue generating portion of the property, but not the expense portion of the property. And I hate, I, like I said, I don't want to impute any intention to this. I just would like to know or have some comfort that that's not what's in the mind of the owners because I don't feel that that would be appropriate for the, the, the result would be that, could be, that here's the keys for the cemetery, we don't want to look after it anymore, the city's going to have to look after, nobody will. And I, like I said, the last thing I want to do is impute intention here, and I apologize for not having brought this up sooner, but sometimes these things just dawn on me because I'm not very smart. So I don't know what the right way forward is, if anybody can shed any light on this, or maybe I'm, I'm totally off base, which I very, very well could be, readily admit to that. And I, last thing I want to do is, you know, cause sort of concern when there is no need for that. I don't want to be a, I don't want to, you know, raise concern if it's unfounded, but I guess I would like to be patted on the back and told, Ryan, it's all okay.
Yeah, and I, I think that's a, a fair question to ask. Unfortunately, I'm not completely clear on, and I would hate to read into the intention for this subdivision. However, our office's position is that we do the review based on land use and our, the city's subdivision bylaw, and based on that, that's why we've come to this recommendation.
Yeah, I think technically, you guys have done the right thing. I don't have an issue technically or process wise in that set at all. Just wondering, I guess, a little broader than that. Again, I apologize for raising this at this point. Probably it would not have been the best thing that I, I should have raised it sooner, but like I said, unfortunately, sometimes these things just dawn on a person, it's all raining a little too late.
Mr. Marcus.
I'm not sure what the procedure would be if council wishes to move this to another meeting. I defer to the city clerk for a response on that.
Well, I guess if we were to table it, I, I think it'd be important, Counselor Lewis, that we send administration with very clear direction. In regards to the concerns that you raised, Mr. Rus, I think it'd be important for us to get a, get more information on private-run cemeteries and their legal obligation moving forward. If there's any examples, say in larger centers, what I'm thinking of in particular would be Prince Albert or Saskatoon or Regina where there are private cemeteries, and what legal obligation they hold. If there is something in the legislation, I think that would help mitigate it for yourself. Right, Counselor Lewis? And maybe I'd extend it to yourself, what are the other questions or the other direction you'd like to extend to admin?
You know, I, honestly, I think I would, wouldn't mind having a bit of time to give some thought into actually providing some direction to administration. And, and again, I want to put on the record that I apologize for bringing this up at this point in time. I had since Friday to look at this report, which I did look at it on Friday. It just, unfortunately, the cogs were turning a little too slow for me to get me to this place until, unfortunately, you were reading the report out loud to me again. So I, I apologize. The, the best way for me to have handled this as a city councillor would have been to be a little bit smarter and swifter about this on Friday. I could have then provided some notice of my concerns and questions to Mr. Rus's department, and they probably could have flushed this out for me so we can move forward today. So I apologize to admin, to the rest of council, to the public, to the landowners for causing this problem. But again, unfortunately, I'm not prepared to proceed.
So, Madam Clerk, then in that case, we'd be looking for a motion to table? Or what would happen to the current motion moved by Bowditch and Tools? Okay.
So, your worship, Madam Clerk, I would move to table this.
Before you do that, I guess, as far as I'm concerned, I'd be quite prepared to move forward with this tonight. I don't think we can presuppose what's going to happen in the future with these things, and so I'd be quite prepared to move forward with the vote this evening.
And as I said, I'm, I'm okay with either option. I guess the tabling option would allow us to get some more information, but I totally understand that that's a poor reflection on the job that I did as a city councillor for the last few days. Not good enough, but that doesn't change my feeling that I, if we do proceed on it, I intend to vote against the, the motion.
That's fair, Counselor Lewis. Thank you for bringing that up, Counselor Freezen. I'd extend it to any other councillors to please chime in at this time. Go ahead, please, Counselor Bowditch.
I agree with Counselor Freezen. I think the potential is there for any business to shut down and leave us responsible, and I just don't know whether this is any different. And, yes, it's, it's difficult. I understand exactly what Counselor Lewis is saying as well, but I just don't think that we should get into that position of choosing the actions when, when, when we're at this situation. So I think we should proceed with it as well.
Counselor Bowditch, go ahead, please. Counselor Tools.
Thank you, your worship, and thanks to Counselor Lewis for bringing that up. When I, when I read this, I saw a, a company, an organization that owned a plot of land that wanted to do two different things and to have them under a separate title because they were different things, but they would still end up owning both of the properties. I don't see that as being much different than a, than a person wanting to subdivide a lot and put two houses on it. They'd still own the property, be responsible for that property in a way that they always, I don't know. But that, you did raise an interesting point, but I, when I read it, I'd ever, that never occurred to me. And I, I would say that, that this is, I read this as being the same as subdividing a lot and putting two houses on it. They still own both properties and are responsible for maintaining and, and paying both properties.
And you're totally correct.
Thank you, Counselor Tools. Go ahead, please, Counselor Martins.
Thank you, your worship, and the, I just, yeah, I thank Counselor Lewis for bringing up his, his points as well, too. I mean, but frankly, I, I read it very similar to Counselor Tools as well, too. I just looked at it as, as an order subdividing a property that they still own both parts of. So I, as well, would be willing to move forward on this tonight.
Counselor Daye, you want to chime in on this one?
I'm going to accept the recommendations from management.
Okay, okay. So, Madam Clerk, help guide me in this case. The first motion. At the end of that motion, if it is voted not in favor, we can't table it because it's already been decided, would we then give the direction to management to move forward and bring it back again? Okay, does that sound fair then, Council? All right, at this time, the, the original motion moved by Counselor Bowditch, seconded by Counselor Tools, Council, I would ask for a vote. All those in favor?
Your worship, prior to doing that, I just want to put on the record again, I have nothing, I have nothing but the utmost respect for the owners of this land. I have no reason to expect anything differently than that they would, that they would move forward in the same way they always have, at a high standard of, of service and care. Many of my family members have been interred in this area. They've been cared for by the owners, and I have no reason to think anything otherwise, but my position remains the same.
Thank you, Counselor Lewis. Before we bring it into a vote, anyone else? Okay, the original motion moved by Counselor Bowditch, seconded by Counselor Tools. All those in favor? And all those opposed? Madam Clerk, please make the notation, this motion's passed.
Mr. Rus.
Thank you, your worship. This next report is in regards to a discretionary use application at two twenty Central Avenue North for West Leaf Retail, Inc. The city has received an application from West Leaf Retail, Inc. and one oh two zero one four four seven four Saskatchewan, Inc. for a change of use development permit to establish a cannabis retail store. Cannabis retail is a discretionary use within the DC two C one direct control central downtown district. Under the city zoning bylaw, any proposed discretionary use requires approval by council resolution. Additional procedures, including a public hearing, are also required to ensure council considers whether the proposed development conforms to the bylaws, site regulations, and development standards, will not be a source of nuisance or endanger the public, and will not impede the orderly development of the surrounding property. The applicant has proposed opening a cannabis retail store at two twenty Central Avenue North and will be renovating the property as illustrated in the supporting documents and plans from the development permit application, which is attached as Schedule A. The development permit application will be reviewed by the Planning and Development Division, other city departments, and external agencies on the suitability of the proposed development. The consultation process for council and administration to consider a discretionary use would be as follows. Public notice of council's intent to consider the discretionary use will be mailed to all assessed property owners within a seventy-five meter radius of the proposed development site and advertised in two consecutive editions of the Southwest booster. This notice will also be posted on the city's website. The public hearing will be held following the public notice at a regular council meeting. And finally, council will, may make its decision at the following regular council meeting. Therefore, at this time, we'd respectfully recommend that notice of council's intent to consider a discretionary use in a DC two C one direct control central downtown district be given at this time for the proposed development of a cannabis retail store located two twenty Central Avenue North and with a legal description of Unit One, condo plan one zero two, one two three, seven four zero, Extension Zero.
Thank you, Mr. Rus. Council.
Your worship, I'll move our general manager's recommendation that notice of council's intent to consider discretionary use in a DC two C one direct control central downtown district be given at this time, as described by Mr. Rus.
Thank you, Counselor Lewis.
Seconded by your worship.
Thank you, Counselor Freezen. Council, do you have any questions or comments in regards to this report? Go ahead, please, Counselor Tools.
Thank you, your worship. I have nothing more to say that I didn't say last time, except that I want to look at this now, and I'm kind of like Counselor Lewis, it just hit me all of a sudden. Seventy-five meter radius doesn't sound like very much, like to, to people around the area. Seventy-five meters is a very, very small, is that, is that standard?
Yes, the seventy-five meter boundary is determined by the city zoning bylaw. But it's also, we also do post that in the newspapers, so all, the entire community has, has a notice of, of this development proceeding.
It's just one form of the notice provided to the public.
Precisely.
Thank you, Mr. Rus. Council, do you have any other questions or comments in regards to this report? Hearing done. Moved by Counselor Lewis, seconded by Counselor Freezen. All those in favor? This motion's passed. Thank you, Mr. Rus. Please continue on.
Thank you, your worship. This next report is regarding a proposal to rezone Parcel E, Plan N two eight five seven, Extension Two, or four fifty-nine Eighteenth Avenue Southeast. Steve's Excavating, Inc. has entered into an agreement to purchase approximately four acres of city-owned land at four fifty-nine Eighteenth Avenue Southeast to accommodate a concrete crushing operation. The subject property is currently zoned as UR, Urban Reserve District, and will need to be rezoned to M two Heavy Industrial District. This proposal was reviewed against the objectives and policies of the city's current development plan bylaw in addition to the land use pattern map of that plan. And I'd also note that we also reviewed that against the city's work in updating our new official community plan that'll be coming forward this, or later this year. The city also considered the current condition of the subject property and the existing land uses surrounding that parcel. The attached Schedule A shows the proposed rezoning of the four acre parcel to be purchased by Steve's Excavating, as well as the adjustments needed to adjacent boundaries within the streets along the property. Therefore, at this time, we'd respectfully recommend that notice of motion be given at this time by advising the public of council's intent to amend zoning bylaw number twenty-four twenty fourteen by rezoning Parcel E, Plan N two eight five seven, Extension Two, at four fifty-nine. by rezoning parcel E, Plan N2857, Extension 2, at 459 18th Avenue Southeast from UR Urban Reserve District to M2 Heavy Industrial District, and adjust any adjacent district boundaries as needed, as shown on Schedule A.
Thank you, Mr. Rus. Council?
Your Worship, I'll move that notice of motion be given at this time by advising the public of council's intention to amend the zoning bylaw number 242014 by rezoning the described property at 459 18th Avenue Southeast from Urban Reserve District to Heavy Industrial, and adjust any adjacent district boundaries as needed, as shown in Schedule A.
Thank Councilor Friesen.
I'll second that, Your Worship.
Thank you, Councilor Bowditch. Council, do you have any questions or comments? Please, go ahead, Councilor Lewis.
Thank you, Your Worship. Mr. Rus, can you just remind me on the notice of motion, what's the notice, I guess, that we actually provide to people in that area? I know in the last report, we talked about a seventy-five meter radius. Is there a similar sort of heavier notice for those people in that area, or how does that happen exactly?
Typically, for rezoning applications, and the city clerk can jump in and correct me if I'm incorrect here, but we just posted in the Southwest Booster for the two consecutive editions.
And on the website.
Yeah. In that note, then, a change in use is not necessarily being approved, or is not actually really what we're giving notice of. It's a change in zoning bylaw that we're giving notice of, to be followed by probably a change in, or, you know, technically be a change in use of that property from what it is right now. Is that correct?
Once the, that's a good question, Councilor Lewis. Once the rezoning is complete, administration would process the development permit application for that, for that proposal to proceed with the development.
Okay. And so at that point, would there be some additional notice provided to people, property owners in that area, or is it the same, just posting in the paper and online?
Depending on the types of uses listed in that district, for heavy industrial, I believe this would be a permitted use, so there wouldn't be any additional notice. So part of the rezoning here would be if any members of the community have concerns or any input that they wish to provide to staff, they can do so at the public hearing upcoming on February 11th.
Good. Thank you for, as I often say, when there's a change in use or a change in zoning, that I'm always wanting to make sure, and I think that our admin team has done a wonderful job of that in the past, and I don't suspect it will be any different moving forward. But just to really want people to be aware that, you know, when there's a change, if you are currently in that area, that you do what you can to learn about that change, become informed, to ask questions, to be involved in the process, because if you don't involve yourself in the process, there is a timeframe that passes, and the right process takes, takes course. So, thanks for that, Mr. Rus.
I'd just like to add that regardless of the motions, it will also be accepted, as well, I think, in my opinion.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
If I may, Your Worship, I'd just like to add that property, when it's urban reserve, it's property held for future zoning. It's not necessarily a change in use, it's just property that was zoned urban reserve. So it's basically held for a future use when it occurs. So in this case, it's changing from basically a concrete dumping ground to an industrial use.
Thank you, Mr. Marcus. Go ahead, please, Councilor Tools.
Thank you, Your Worship. When I look at the map, I see it's, this area that we're considering is surrounded on two sides by heavy industrial already, one side by light industrial, and the other side by urban reserve, which is waiting for some designation of some kind. So it just doesn't seem to be, I didn't see it as being out of place when I looked at the map.
Councilor Tools? Go ahead, Councilor Martins first.
No, that's fine.
Go ahead, please, Councilor Martins.
No, I didn't realize I had it wrong.
Yeah, I'm not, not objecting to it at all. I just, you know, want people to be aware, whenever we go through this process, that there's a public input, and always want the public to be encouraged to have input and to not wait till it's too late and not get to have that input. Their standard cookie cutter comments that I make almost every time we do this, so, thanks.
Go ahead, please, Councilor Bowditch.
Thank you, Your Worship. Mr. Rus, I just want to say that I'm glad to see that property actually being used, and hopefully it'll be remediated somewhat, because as Mr. Marcus mentioned there, it's been a concrete dumping ground, as such, concrete, you know, where it's been dumped for many, many years, and that's basically been a useless land plot for us and all that sort of stuff. And it's actually not a bad, a bad spot for it. There isn't much for residential around there. I'm probably one of the closest people there to where this crushing plant will go and all that sort of stuff. And I just, I hope when we make the development and all that, that we have certain standards set just for the basic upkeep, the land, you know, it's bordered and kept in, contained, and all that sort of stuff. That's the only thing that I would have as far as any type of concern, is when you get into a crushing business, or gravel business, or anything else, quite often that can spill over, and it's just not the nicest looking stuff when that happens, and all that sort of stuff, and so. But I will be supporting this wholeheartedly, because, hey, it's more business in our area, and that's good.
Thanks for your comments, Councilor Bowditch, and the rest of council. I know our admin team is very excited to see something, or some interest in this property, and with the rezoning to an industrial property, the standard performance standards apply to, to any development. So that should hopefully take care of any concerns you may have.
Well, thank you all of council for chiming in on this. Does anyone have any other questions or comments? Council, you remember when we did our council tour in the fall? This was one of the properties that was highlighted to us, so definitely can see benefit to this change. Moved by Councilor Friesen, seconded by Councilor Bowditch. All those in favor? This motion's passed. Mr. Rus?
Before you start with this report, I will declare conflict on this one, as I do contract work for the Pioneer Co-op, and they are involved in this proposal, so I'll leave the room.
Thank you, Councilor Friesen. Go ahead, please, Mr. Rus.
Thank you, Your Worship. This report deals with a proposed textual amendment to the zoning bylaw to add liquor stores as a permitted use in the C4 district. City has received an application to amend zoning bylaw number 242014 from the Pioneer Co-op Association Limited in the Wheatland Mall at 1150 Central Avenue North. The Pioneer Co-op is requesting a proposed textual amendment to add liquor stores as a permitted principal use in the C4 Shopping Center Commercial District. Under the city's zoning bylaw, council has the authority to make any amendments provided there in keeping with the intent of the city's development plan bylaw number 22003, as well as any other development policy, bylaw, or statute. The amendment to the zoning bylaw to add liquor stores as a permitted principal use in the C4 Shopping Center Commercial District would accommodate a potential new or change of use development at the Wheatland Mall by the Pioneer Co-op. It would also bring the existing liquor store at the Swift Current Mall into compliance. The textual amendment required for this proposal would be made to Section 415 of the zoning bylaw. Liquor stores would be added to the list of permitted principal uses in the C4 district as subsection 415-2122. The consultation process for council and administration to consider the zoning bylaw amendment would be as follows. Public notice of council's intent to consider the zoning bylaw amendment will be advertised in consecutive editions of the Southwest Booster. This notice will also be posted on the city's website. Following the public notice and advertisement, the public hearing will be held during a regular council meeting. And finally, council may make its decision at the following regular council meeting. Therefore, at this time, we'd respectfully recommend that notice of motion be given at this time by advising the public of council's intent to make textual amendments to Section 415 of zoning bylaw number 242014 by adding liquor stores as a permitted principal use as subsection 415-2122.
Thank you, Mr. Rus. Council?
I'll move that notice of motion be given at this time by advising the public of council's intent to make textual amendments to the zoning bylaws by adding liquor stores as permanent principal use as described in the bylaw.
And Councilor Tools?
I'll second that, Your Worship.
And Councilor Martins. Council, do you have any questions or comments in regards to this report? Go ahead, please, Councilor Tools.
Thank you, Your Worship. I just have one that I marked with my little fancy yellow pencil, where it says, "It will also bring the existing liquor store at the Swift Current Mall into compliance." Does that mean it hasn't? Like, can you explain that to me, please?
That's a good question, Councilor Tools. Unfortunately, I don't really have an answer for you. The existing liquor store at the Swift Current Mall was developed, and I believe at the time, it, this wasn't listed as a use in that district. I'm not knowledgeable on the context of how that proceeded at the time, but our, our report here is to hopefully move forward and fix that issue.
So that, it was, that liquor store's been there, what, 20 years?
It was, if I may chime in.
Go ahead, please, Mr. Marcus.
I believe the existing one was, liquor store was developed around '05, and that would have been when administration, City Hall was at the mall, and it would have been an oversight by administration at the time to not bring the amendment forward prior to that development taking place.
And that's fair, thank you. And I wasn't suggesting we should do anything about it, I just wondered, I wondered about that. It made, it made my, my nose wrinkle and go, hmm.
Thank you, Councilor Tools. Thank you for the answer, Mr. Rus. Council, do you have any other questions or comments in regards to this report? I've got one, Mr. Rus. At the, at that mall currently, there is an off sale. That off sale, would it fall under the jurisdiction of being called a liquor store or an off sale, and would it be in the same boat as the liquor store now being in compliance?
There is another listed use in that district for cocktail lounges, and under our definitions that would include kind of that accessory off sale.
Okay.
However, liquor stores as a standalone use isn't listed, and that's why we're trying to make that correction today.
Thanks for that clarification. I appreciate it, Mr. Rus. Council, any other questions or comments in regards to this report? Hearing none. Moved by Councilor Tools, seconded by Councilor Martins. All those in favor? This motion's passed. Can somebody please invite Councilor Friesen back in? I don't know if I got it in there. Thank you, Councilor Friesen. That gets through our items for action this evening. At this time, we'll move over to our section for bylaws. We do have a bylaw to go through at this time. It's to amend the development bylaw number 32003 by adding the Omen School Site redevelopment plan as an addendum to the official development plan. I'll call upon the city clerk to present the second reading.
Thank you, Your Worship. Moved by Councilor Degg, seconded by Councilor Bowditch. That Bill Number 82018 be given second reading.
Council members, are you in favor of the second reading?
Bill Number 82018 be read a second time this 14th day of January 2019.
This bylaw is now open for discussion and debate, and I'll call upon Councilor Degg.
Thank you, Your Worship. Sorry. Thank you, Your Worship. Just a bit of a briefing note regarding Bill Number 82018. Following the Chinook School Division's decision to close Oleman School, the city commissioned associated engineering to complete a redevelopment plan for the site to outline community expectations for further, future reuse. During this project, city administration undertook a robust public engagement process, which included workshops, online surveys, and online surveys in order to obtain community feedback. The project were, the project were overt, was undertaken to outline how this land could be designed and developed to enhance the existed, established neighborhood, as well as an analysis was done in regards to servicing and transportation impacts in order to identify potential constraints within the area. Council is the approving authority for the adoption of concept plans within the city, and the intent is to adopt this plan by bylaw to establish the vision and framework for redevelopment of this former school site by amending the city's development plan bylaw.
Thank you, Councilor Degg. Madam Clerk, please proceed with the motion for third reading of this bylaw.
Thank you, Your Worship. Moved by Councilor Degg, seconded by Councilor Bowditch. That Bill Number 82018 be given, given a third reading and finally pass this 14th day of January 2019.
At this time, we have another bylaw. It's to amend the development plan bylaw number 32003 by adding the Ashley Park School Site redevelopment plan as an addendum to the official development plan. I'll call upon the city clerk to present the second reading.
Thank you, Your Worship. Moved by Councilor Martins, seconded by Councilor Tools. That Bill Number 92018 be given second reading.
Council members, are you in favor of the second reading?
Bill Number 92018, read a second time this 14th day of January 2019.
This bylaw is now open for discussion and debate, and I'll call upon Councilor Martins.
Thank you, Your Worship. This is Councilor Degg 2.0. Just a little revision here, a little briefing note. Following the Chinook School Division's decision to close Ashley Park School, city commissioned associated engineering to complete a redevelopment plan for the site to outline community expectation for future use. During this project, city administration undertook a robust public engagement process, which included workshops and online surveys in order to obtain community feedback. The project was undertaken to outline how this land could be designed and developed to enhance the existing established neighborhood, as well an analysis was done in regard to servicing and transportation impacts in order to identify potential constraints within the area. Council is the approving authority for the adoption of concept plans within the city, and the intent is to adopt this plan by bylaw to establish the vision and framework for redevelopment of this former school site by amending the city's development plan bylaw.
Thank you, Councilor Martins. Madam Clerk, please proceed with the motion for third reading of this bylaw.
Thank you, Your Worship. Moved by Councilor Martins, seconded by Councilor Tools. That Bill Number 92018 be given third reading and finally pass this 14th day of January 2019.
Madam Clerk, thank you, Council. That completes our section for bylaws for this evening. Under new business, we have one item, and it is for receive and file. It's the agenda for the Swift Current Branch Library Board Meeting to be held January 16th, 2019. Council, I'd be looking for a motion to receive and file. I assume it's going to come from Councilor Degg, our new appointee to this board.
I'd like to move that we accept the communications regarding the agenda for the Swift Current Branch Library Board. Thanks, Your Worship.
Thank you, Councilor Degg. Seconded by?
I'll second that. You receive and file, Your Worship.
Thank you so much, Councilor Lewis. Council, do you have any questions or comments in regards to this agenda? Hearing none. It'll be to received and filed. Motion moved by Councilor Degg, and it's seconded by Councilor Lewis. All those in favor? It is passed. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Your Worship. I have a request to be discussed in camera regarding appointments to boards and committees, local authority Freedom of Information Protection of Privacy Act justification, Section 16, plans or positions relating to pending management personnel policy or budgeting decisions. The request to meet is immediately following tonight's council meeting, and staff members required to be in attendance, the CIO, General Manager of Corporate Services, General Manager of Infrastructure and Operations, General Manager of Planning and Growth, and myself, the city clerk.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Council?
I'll move that we go in camera immediately following tonight's meeting to discuss the appointments to boards and committees.
And Councilor Friesen? Councilor Bowditch? Council, do you have any questions or comments in regards to this report? Moved by Councilor Friesen, seconded by Councilor Bowditch. All those in favor? This motion's passed. Next, we'll move on to reports of our council members, or if anybody has any inquiries for management, and it has been a few weeks, maybe if you guys could remind me, are we starting on the left or the right today?
We'll start fresh.
Start fresh?
Yeah.
Then we'll start on the right. Please go ahead, Councilor Bowditch.
All right, Your Worship. Thank you very much. I'll keep it short and sweet here. I had the pleasure of attending the grand opening of the new Coast Hotel in Swift Current, along with yourself, Your Worship, and Councilor Tools, and it was a very, very good time. I can be really proud. Coast Hotels opened up their very first hotel now, operating their very first hotel in Saskatchewan. They chose Swift Current as the place to, to expand to, first of all, in Saskatchewan, which makes us very, very proud. The second thing I want to say is I just really, I remember the good old Horseshoe Hotel from years ago, or the Horseshoe Inn, or Horseshoe Lodge, whatever. or the Horseshoe Inn, or Horseshoe Lodge, whatever, different names that it had over the years. But for the last number of years, quite a few number of years, it was owned by Bill Thacker and the Thacker family and all that. And I also want to congratulate them, and I want to condemn, congratulate them on continuing to see the value in investing in Swift Current and continuing their investment because they've joined up as partners with the Coast Hotel chain and that sort of stuff. And it's just really, really great when we see somebody new come in that believes in the community and somebody that's been there for a long time, and the family's decided to continue as well. And it just serves our community very, very well. Thank you, Worship.
Thank you, Councilor Bowditch. Please go ahead, Councilor Day.
Yes, I would like to add to that Coast Hotel grand opening a little bit. Bill Thacker was, when he, he was one of the first people that kind of identified the need for the casino in their community. And so he was one of the first people to start that. He's also was the first one to have the Days Inn in town here, too. That was new in Saskatchewan as well at the time. So I was, I was able to go down later on in the afternoon and had a chat with the, the family a little bit about that. And I thought that was very interesting. So a few other things that I'd like to bring up today, and probably some other people have this on their list, but the AA Midget Broncos are having a successful season this year. Twenty-eight and all right now, and I think they got eight games left in their season. So it's, it's going to be a real challenge, I think, for them to go undefeated. Everybody's going to be kind of gunning for them. They have three, three games this weekend on the road. So I just want to give a shout out to Todd Hornig and his, his assistant coaches, Jody Larson and Dan Johnson, on the phenomenal feat that they've, they've accomplished this year. So, and I also want to thank Dean Brockman for all the work he's done with the Broncos. This is an incredible turnaround for, in my mind anyways, to recoup all of the assets that we gave away to make that run that we did last year. So I, you know, it's, it's really good hockey, and I think the fans are, are recognizing that these kids are really putting their best foot forward and, and are showing up at the, at the games. I think I did a little small calculation. It's almost 2,400. We're, we're over 2,380 some, as an average attendance so far. So I think that's, it's very good. Kudos on to our, our fans for that. I want to congratulate Everett Hindley. He became a successful candidate for the fall election that's going to be coming up in 2020 for the South Party. He was uncontested, which didn't surprise anybody at the meeting. So he's been a pretty good candidate for us so far. Looking forward to the library board meetings. There's, I've been receiving some correspondence the last little bit that I'll be able to compile and, and forward on to Leanne so that she can have it in our, our packages for the next meeting. As was mentioned, January 16th is our first board meeting. It's at 6:30 in the evening. And yeah, I think that's going to be exciting. And the regional meeting, executive regional meeting is going to be held on January 28th during the day, so it won't conflict with our council meeting that evening. So, and I think, yeah, that's, that's all I have today. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilor Day. Councilor Pluus?
Yeah, thank you, Your Worship. Despite it being a busy time period since our last meeting, I was busier with Christmas and Christmas concerts and kids and all those sorts of things, as I'm sure most other people on council were busy with Christmas as well. So maybe a few less things to do related to the city, but a few things that I think we want to mention, looking way back to the day after our last council meeting, on January of the 18th, we held a.
December? Sorry? December the 18th.
December, yes, sorry. Wrote it down here wrong in my notes. Looking back to December the 18th, the chamber hosted a very successful state of the city address by yourself, following the budget to, well, I think anybody who wanted to come in, in here, but largely it was the business, the business community in the, in the city. And I think it was a, a good event for us to be able to communicate with some key stakeholders in our city, but wanted to take this opportunity just to thank the Chamber of Commerce for their part in organizing that. Also wanted to mention that on last Monday, a week ago tonight, myself, Councilor Toles, Councilor Freezen, Mr. Marcus, I think that was it, from council, attended a special PPIH meeting, Prairie Pioneers Independent Housing Meeting, just to do some admin stuff, getting ready for the AGM, which is coming up here very shortly. But I also just wanted to say thanks to, again, the admin team there for doing an outstanding job for the last while, not just the admin team, but also the board, for doing an outstanding job of making that organization run significantly better than it has in the past. That has not gone unnoticed. And then I also wanted to mention two other things. Looking forward, now that I am the city's representative on the Chamber of Commerce, there's a chamber event coming up on the 22nd, which I will be attending, at least for a short while, when it begins at 5 o'clock at the Royal Bank. They want to welcome people to come and tour through their newly renovated facility and looking for, enjoy some fellowship. So I'm looking forward to that, as well as, I guess it's after our next council meeting, but I'll leave that to the next meeting. Thanks, Your Worship.
Thanks, Councilor Pluus. Go ahead, please, Councilor Freezen.
Thanks, Your Worship. I have a little update on the Summer Games, which, again, isn't that far away now. They had a very busy Christmas season online, and they've reached over 1,000 likes on their Facebook page, and it's trending upwards. So there's lots more people interested and starting to take note of what's happening with the Summer Games, which is less than six months away now. So there's a new series, Get in the Game, with myself, that was posted this morning. And I'd like to encourage all my fellow councillor members and everyone in the general public to start following and sharing everything games-related, so that everyone's up to date on what's happening. This series will, will go out once a month, and there'll be some interesting facts and upcoming items about the games. Some other really exciting news, the Games Office announced that the local artist, Brandon Weeb, won the design contest for the medals of the Games, and I hope everybody had a chance to see that medal. It was just fantastic, a very nice design, and very symbolic of our city. So, yeah. The volunteer recruitment launch for the Games is coming up on January 21st, and everyone's invited to attend at 10:30 upstairs in the Iplex, in the conference room. And as I mentioned before, they're looking for about 2,000 volunteers, so this is going to be a huge undertaking. So anybody that's interested in the volunteer part of it, come out and join them on the 21st of January. And there's also great work moving forward in the fundraising and sponsorships, and some good ideas for the spring, and, and I'll be sharing with those, those with you as we firm things up. Tonzi and Ravi, those are the Games mascots, are still working hard at their winter training. They've been training. They haven't been out and about much. But community will start to see them out in the next couple of months. And again, I'd just like to ask everyone to like and share all the posts and keep the momentum going. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Councilor Freezen. Go ahead, please, Councilor Toles.
Thank you, Worship. And back in December, again, December 20th, I had to attend my last tourism meeting as a council rep, and I'll be turning that over to the capable hands of Councilor Freezen for January. Just a couple of things to report from tourism that many have been mentioned already, but I'm just going to go through a few things that, you know, 2019 looks like to be an amazing year. And we, we got the Hockey Day in Canada that we heard about already, the Living Sky Casino Powwow on February 16th and 17th. If you haven't been to one of those, it's absolutely amazing. What a great show. Chautauqua Theater Festival this year is, is always been in July. It's moving to May, June this year to accommodate the Shakespearean Festival in July. So Chautauqua Theater Fest, the lyric will be in, in May and June this year. It's, it's lining up to be a great week of, of live professional theater. Of course, we have the Long Days Night Music Festival and, and Windscape, Frontier Days Rodeo, Celebrate Canada Day on July 1st, and the 25th Annual Watermelon Festival out at the Heritage Village. So those are things that, and of course, Summer Games. Those are all things that we have to look forward to. And, and so tourism is, is exciting in, in Swift Current at this point. Also, on December 20th, I attended my last meeting of the Swift Current Branch Library, and I'll be turning that over to the capable hands of Councilor Dig. And I'll be interested in hearing the monthly reports on the library. Thank you very much. So really exciting things happening in, in our library as well. On January 7th, I attended a meeting of the Southwest Youth Emergency Shelter, or Dory's House. And just to note that Dory's House is closed for accommodation, but they are still serving the youth of Swift Current. That's why we're still fundraising and looking after things. We're still providing clothing and some food and some counseling for, especially for career-type things. Charmaine Westbury has been there to open the doors, and, and we have a, a fairly well-stocked closet downstairs. If people need dress clothes for interviews or winter clothes for winter, or, or food to make it through the Christmas, we had some things there for them. And, and if they need some assistance in, in preparing for, especially getting ready for jobs and things, that's, the, the shelter is still doing good work, even though we don't hear much about it anymore. On January 9th, I attended the Swift Current Museum Luncheon Learn, and they do this every month at the, at the museum. I attend as many as I can. This month was incredible. It was talking about the role of the Red River Cart in the settlement of the Western Canada. And it was really, as a history major, I think I knew a lot of this, but I, I learned a lot of things that I didn't know before. And that's what I like to do when I attend something, is to learn something new. On January 10th, I attended my first meeting as a council rep to the Drug Strategy Action Committee. And a couple of months meetings ago, we had Constable Curdie in, in chamber, and he was talking about his, his role as liaison officer. And he set up a thing at the comp. Now, you techie people will know what that is. What is it? It's called a?
It's a Q scanner, Q reader.
Sure. Anyway, he's got this up on, on a display at the comp that the students can access on a bulletin board. And, sorry, I haven't got a bigger one. And they can put that into their phone and be, and access directly to him to ask questions or to get information about things RCMP-related, or law-related, or, or personal-related. And so I think it's a, I had a chance to look at it and even try it out by taking a picture of the little doohickey thing with my phone, and, and it popped up a questionnaire. And I found it really, I think it's really a move forward for the comp. And so I wanted to bring that up. The, the next night, January 11th, the Swift Current Drug Strategy Action Committee hosted free glow bowling and pizza and chips and water. We had about, about 25 or 30 youth, 11 to 17, showed up and had a great night of alcohol and drug-free entertainment and bowling and having a good time. And I just was really, really happy to be there as part of that. The Swift Current Art Gallery now has a display on, by, an artist by the name of Zane Wilcox. And, and I encourage everyone to stop into the art gallery and have a look. It's an interactive art gallery. It's ropes and, and wood that you kind of use lights and shadows to create your own art. You can actually play with the things. It was, for me, it was a lot of fun. My, the inner child came out. There's also another second room that has to do with perspective and mirrors. And it just, it's really hard to explain, but I have a, a description of it here if anybody's interested in, in reading. It's called Perceptual Playground. And I picked that up when I was there looking at it. And it's just quite, quite an exciting thing to do if you like art. The final thing I'll mention is upcoming Stars for Saskatchewan performance on Friday. Erin Costello, a, a rhythm and blues rock pop singer from Halifax, Nova Scotia, an amazing talent, and she'll be here at the Sky Center on Friday for Stars for Saskatchewan with the Arts Council of Swift Current. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Toles. Last but not least, Councilor Martins.
I mean, I don't know how I can follow up Councilor Toles.
Impossible, too, but.
That's a tough one.
I wish you all the best.
I, along with Councilor Pluus, had a lot of, you know, really good times over the holidays with, with family and whatnot, and attended some nieces and nephews' Christmas concerts as well, too. So had an opportunity to do that. I'm looking forward to a number of different boards that I'll be newly on in January, the first of which meeting will be this coming Wednesday, the Swift Current Ag and Ex. I'll be meeting, first board meeting with them. And then on the 29th of January, I've got two back-to-back meetings with the Truth and Reconciliation Board and the Newcomer Welcome Center. So looking forward to both of those meetings. And that being said, on that night, I will unfortunately be unable to attend the SBCA fundraiser, which will be taking place on that night. They are having a, a wing night, $20. Out of the brew pub gets you a pint and a pound of wings. And of course, all the money goes towards their Hope Fund. If you can attend, it's, I mean, I'm a big SBCA advocate all throughout. So I mean, if you're able to attend, it's just a great night and really helps out the shelter. Tickets are available by contacting Teresa at the SBCA, or by picking them up at PharmSave as well. And I just wanted to give, I wanted to give a, it's an odd shout-out, I guess you could say, but I wanted to give a shout-out to all the laborers that worked on Christmas Day. My dad was one of those that worked most Christmases that I can remember. He ended up getting a call to go and fix this and fix that. And I mean, it takes away from family time. So I just wanted to give a shout-out to any laborers that had to work over the Christmas holidays. It's taken time away some, from their families in order to help put food on their tables. It's, it doesn't go unnoticed, and I can personally say I truly appreciate it. So my hat's off to you.
Thank you, Councilor Martins. Thank you all of council, all the work that's definitely been done and all the work that will be going forward. Just a reminder to all the public, you heard from Councilor Toles, the exciting thing's happening in 2019. It is going to be the year of events for our city. A big thank you to all the volunteers that I know will be stepping up. This is a community of volunteers, and we will be definitely showing the support for that. So I want to say thank you in advance. Thank you in advance for all the facilities that I know will be working extra overtime this year in order to be the true hosts and the host community that we are. Just want to be welcoming to everyone that'll be, be calling Swift Current home for those weeks throughout the summer and throughout, well, I guess in the coming weeks for, for Hockey Day, and of course, in the fall when we have more events coming. It is going to be a very, very big year for Swift. I encourage all the public, if you haven't done so already, sign up, be a part of it. It's going to be a great year for our community. At this time, I'll call for a motion to go in camera.
Your Worship, I will make the motion to go in camera.
And adjourn this evening's meeting.
And adjourn this evening's meeting for January the 14th.
Thank you, Councilor Martins. Thank you, Councilor Pluus. All those in favor? This motion's passed. Have a great evening, everybody.